All right, good evening, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started on the topic. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 19th, 2024 City Council Workday. We have to strictly silence all electronic devices. We'll move right into the agenda of this statement. Item A is Old City Bronx Landfill Mediation Plan Update. At this time, we'll recognize Bob Patterson, our Water Resources Director.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Today, we have an update on the study that's been ongoing since about 2019 on what we call the Old City Road Landfill. NCDQ has a program for pre-regulatory landfills to assess and remediate if necessary. And this is our third phase of that work. Not to be confused with environmental assessments, Phase One, Phase Two. This is just the third section of work. We have had entry cases with SNME to give us an update and recap of what they found.
Good evening, everyone. Phase two is completed. It involved above-ground vapor stream, which was leading the vapors just above the soil level above the base. We delineated the extent of the waste by starting where we knew the waste existed. And then stepping away from that, we found those edges installed 19 groundwater monitoring wells, sampled deep surface water locations, six surface seats. And when I refer to surface seats, these are places where pumping a small stream of water is usually coming out of the side slope of the landfill. We also sampled the sediment at those seats to see if they had been impacted by the surface water. We also sampled two water supply wells that were in vicinity of their offsite. And one of those we connected to public water. And then we did shite it in the sediment of soil to see what's naturally in the soil background-wise. So that when we're looking at some of our other samples, we can determine if something is possibly impacted or not. This sort of shows out the layout inside. The ground on this creek is on the right-hand side. Even the road that we've left, as I mentioned before, we completed that above-ground vapor stream. That basically showed us that the landfill gas well that we worry about to measure the new background. So that was a good finding. We did delineate the extent of the waste in those regulations. Of the groundwater monitoring wells we put in, there were several constituents that were detected that were levels greater than the drinking water standards. They were primarily what we call volatile organic compounds. The four most prominent ones are what we call category of chlorinated solvents. And I won't get into the chemical details there, but primarily trichlorethylene, perchlorethylene, monochloride, and one for dioxide. We also did our sampling of the surface waters, the seats, and that certainly sampling both solids and liquids. There we basically found similar constituents as we found in groundwater, which is not uncommon. And as I mentioned before, two water supply wells. And here's the first slide, I think it'll be helpful for everyone. I put the little blue dots on them. Those are three water supply wells that are on offsite properties around the site. The ones to the right, nothing was detected. And the ones to the left where your cursor's at now. That was the one that had the exceeds of the drinking water standard. When that was discovered, they were provided with bottled water and then they were connected to public water. So that risk was taken care of. The constituent we detected in that well was detected at the landfill, but I cannot say that that came from the landfill. But it seemed like the right thing to do, and the city did the right thing connecting it. With regards to Phase Three or the third phase we're in now, or proposing to do now, we're really sort of building upon what was done in Phase Two. So we have soil gas sampling that will be conducted. And this time, the soil gas sampling we'll be doing will be in the waste itself to see what sort of vapors and what chemicals are in those vapors. We've got 12 monitoring wells to put in. Eight of those will be relatively shallow. Four of them are deeper. And the purpose for those is to define the extent of these groundwater impacts. We know it's impacted at the edge of the landfill, basically, but we need to see how far it has migrated. We'll also do additional surface water sampling because some of those surface water sample locations did have constituents at levels above the surface water standards for the state. And we are adding hexavalent chromium to a couple of our sample locations. Prior work only measured total. And the reason for the hexavalent chromium is it's more toxic than trivalent chromium. And it helps us in what we call our risk assessment to determine, okay, what are these concentrations and what are the risks that would be posed to human health and the environment? The next map really sort of shows you the different locations where the primary sampling done. And the red locations and the green are the big monitoring wells. So it shows you we're stepping out beyond the edge of the landfill. Most on this, on the lower portion of the site, those are offsite. And then there's one that's also offsite, their end would be just a little higher right there. And then the rest of them are on the east side of the creek that separates the landfill from the remainder of this property. Next slide. The fees estimated for Phase Three are roughly $181,000. NCDQ has reviewed our work plan and has approved a work plan and those fees, which are based on the schedule that the state lays out. Next slide. What's beyond Phase Three? You know, we really, as I mentioned earlier, each phase sort of builds on the next. And until we have defined the extents of each of these, medium, the soil, groundwater, the sea, the surface water, and the groundwater, our work is sort of not done. So delineating the extents is really where we would go from there. We may also get some work assessing the soil cover system itself on the landfill. And the reason for that is the most common remedy, and we'll see the last item on there, the remedial action, the most common remedy for these landfills is to make sure that there's an adequate soil cover to entomb the waste so that exposure to humans or visitors to the site would be managed. I blasted all of that out there.
Yeah. Questions? The $181,000, I think we're going to ask for that on consent agenda for budget management. Is that right?
Yes, that'll be the request to add this to consent agenda.
And that is a, that'll be reimbursable?
Yes. Through the state's remediation.
Any other questions? So based on where you are here, I mean, this is a whole question. Are we at a point to determine where possibly that property could be used for after this work is finished?
We will at the end of the study, but it will also require knowing what those future uses would be. Now, I'll use the example of probably the area of landfill itself is probably more likely to be usable for something like a landfill than to put a structure on top of it because of the nature of the chemicals that are flowing. Depending on the extent of what's in groundwater of the property that is beyond the limits of the waste, other uses are certainly possible, but we would have to evaluate what the risks are. What I can add in, maybe down a couple of slides if you don't mind. I'll hold it right there. What I can say, when we're talking about groundwater and vapors, typically these streams will act as a barrier for groundwater migration and potentially vapors. So there's a good chance that the risk of their impact on this eastern side of the property are low. I'm not telling you they're low, but I'm telling you that based on common practices, we would anticipate that outcome. But that's why we're putting the wells in place that we have shown you in 30% of the last slide. Does that help you with that?
Any other questions? Everybody good with this?
Thank you. If I could take one second, I'd like to introduce our new engineer, Brad Barber, who just joined us last week as principal engineer.
Got a lot of work for you today. I can see that. Everybody know we're looking at Item B on the Agenda Housing Market Study with Dancy Research and Wolf River Advisors. At this time, we'll recognize our friend, Brad Barber, also.
Yes, I'm just here really to introduce Cindy Dancy and Andy Scott. They are going to be, this is sort of like kickoff. They're going to be working with the city and developing a housing study. So let me have them sit down and kind of go through what they're going to be doing for us.
Good evening.
So basically, what we're trying, what we're going to be doing is really doing a report on the housing stock. Looking at the values, really assess where Burlington Inn is in terms of housing. So we're not going to make any recommendations. It's looking at what the housing is, what the costs are as far as what's on the market, availability, and then look at it in terms of affordability. And Andy, if you want to kind of say a few words.
The first thing what we do is sort of establish you kind of a, what's there now? And what are the values and how do they put this laid out as far as how the values are and how much it costs to buy a house in any particular neighborhood? To give you an idea of what your housing stock is and who you're serving. And then from that point, then you might go later and determine if there are places you need to fill in or actions you need to take. So most of our work is going to be descriptive and it's going to be, you know, based on the data that's out there and the economics that apply to the housing. Also, just to vary a little bit, what the trends might be with Toyota coming on to the mega site to give you some idea, not so much of what you need to do, but what you might expect. So I'm not glad to answer any questions about methodology or affordability or any of those, but what we're going to try to stay away from is being descriptive. So you see what you have and you can come up with your questions and how you want to address it.
Will this take into consideration single-family houses as well as multifamily?
Yes, rentals, ownership, both. So it's looking at where people can live with an overlay of demographics, population growth, income, and what that track is.
And will we see, we try to keep up, and staff's done a very good job of keeping us up with what percentage of our residential population is multifamily. But will we see updated information on percentages or just?
We can do that as we get through. I mean, we're going to look at, you know, not individuals, but potentially we won't touch every housing. Every piece of housing that is listed within your tax base is being residential.
Any other questions for you? What generalist timeline?
It's a 20 to 2024 deadline timeline. And so this is, we're really excited about this opportunity and working with them. They're also going to be assisted by the, or advertised for a part-time housing person. So they want to also help to aid in any of the study as well, in any way possible.
And we also appreciate Sandy and Andy. They really helped us formulate the job description as well. So we do want to thank them for that part-time position.
Any questions?
I look forward to working with you. I do want to say that the SNME study reminded me about Benny Pearson, the manager's office in Graceboro. And I've forgotten what I know about, oh, what is this?
We look forward to working with you.
I'm glad that's your studying on my side.
Fair enough. Our next item, Item C, is voluntary non-contiguous annexation request. We've got five parcels, 3405 Maple Avenue, 707 Tillman Street, 719 Tillman, 713 Tillman, and 715 Tillman. So at this time, we'll recognize Jamie once again to bring us up to speed on this.
Okay, starting with the Tillman Street applications, these are all utility requests for water and sewer and also where staff has recommended annexation for them. The Maple Avenue property, because of its location, we are not recommending for annexation. So these are the four properties along the Tillman Street area where the utility requests have been made. They're for single-family purposes only. There are utilities in place along Tillman Street. The properties are adjacent to existing city limits. You can see on the map currently on the right side, they're surrounded by city properties. So we are, we have already recommended the utility connection. And in this case, because of their location, we are also recommending annexation. So in your packet, there's a resolution for these properties to be heard at the September 17th City Council meeting for a public hearing. Any questions on these?
So those are, how many parcels is that for?
It's four.
That's four, okay. All the Tillman Street.
Yep.
And that would be seven day public hearing tomorrow for September 17th?
Correct.
Everybody good with that?
The other one is kind of at the intersection of West Canal, Hummer Road, Holt, and Maple Avenue. It's the property on the west side of the intersection. This is not contiguous to existing city limits. They're only seeking water that is the only service that is available to them. This is just west and south of the existing city limits. So we have recommended the utility connection for water since it's there. But because it's not immediately adjacent at this time, we are recommending the council defer the annexation. And we could revisit it if the other properties in the area fill in within the period of 20 years.
And how far is that from current to?
Right on the, this is Shamrock.
Okay.
So this tanish color is the existing city limits. So it's just kind of diagonal across the way.
So there was another property that made in city utilities that I think was in the ETJ. We're talking about Grandmont, what town, and that was SNME?
Yeah.
Where is that?
Further south to the east.
Some reach track or is it wrong?
That's right. This property also, I don't remember the owner's name, but this property is also being looked at again for residential purposes. So we'll be getting closer to the vicinity of this area. And you know that we've done some satellite annexations along West Canal Route Two. So I think it's inevitable that this area will fill in.
So there was recommendations to provide services behind that?
That's correct.
And that'll be the separate question?
Is he just, was for consent agenda?
Yep. Is everybody good with that? Any other questions? I think we're over. Next item, Item D, is traffic commission revision to include biking pedestrian advocates. At this time, we'll recognize Mike Mill and our director of transportation, William.
Good day, Mayor Council. So prior discussion with biking pedestrian, as you know, we have a citywide pedestrian fund which also has a citywide greenways and bikeways plan. The manager asked me to look at some options of how we can incorporate advocates into our process. You know, we have a traffic commission, make sure of that as well, that really primarily right now looks at our streets, our local city streets, speed limits, their parking zones loaded. But it felt like that's the environment to offer this pedestrian biking to. Because we have, as I said, two plans to look at. There are currently two vacant seats on the commission of this total of seven. You have two vacant. Possible if you want to or add some bicycle and pedestrian advocates, it'd be a good type of effort. They do operate off of just sort of a summary white paper that's in your packet. There's no bylaws or specific things, well, there are a few specific things. But we thought we'd just add, under traffic comment policy, the adopted plans will be used to improve the pedestrian biking environment throughout the city. When possible, two members of traffic commission would be biking pedestrian advocates.
So obviously, we had someone that we spoke during public comments. And it made sense to try to combine the two needs. And I think that person actually volunteered that they would be served. Yep. And then I think Councilmember Walsh, candidate for traffic commission, is that right?
That's correct, Mayor.
So do we, would just leave the number of commission members the same? Is that what the plan would be?
Yes, sir. Seven for a seven now, we just have two vacant seats.
Okay.
Two others.
How does everybody feel about combining that and adding what's in yellow to the responsibilities of the commission?
I think it's a really good idea. I would, I'm not a favorer of that, I'm a second major.
Correct, I agree 100%. And it gives the legal broader purpose for the traffic commission. And the traffic as we know it, as is identified now versus bikeway and greenway, they all work together anyway. So it don't make sense. So everybody's good with that?
Just to be clear, so those two additions, they would just take the place of the two that were missing on the traffic commission, basically?
Yep.
Would happen now.
And we're just expanding the role of the traffic commission to include bikeway and greenway plan, pedestrian plan, with advocates for that. Dr. Simpson, you have your red one?
All right, good deal.
Appreciate that, and I think that's a great solution. I appreciate staff work on that. Item D, advisory boards and commission appointments. I know we had a couple that we were still going after with. So at this time, we'll have John Vernon, our public information specialist, to bring us up to speed on where we're at.
Hi, Mayor Council. I, just before you today, the vacancy for the planning and zoning commission, I did receive yesterday, came in an application for the traffic commission. There must have been a potential to go along. And I will, certainly, if it was as passed as on tomorrow, the changes to the traffic commission will re-advertise for those appointments I bring you before you, as soon as possible. So I did send you the applicant, the applicants for the planning and zoning commission. There were no new applicants. There was some of you who were attracted to their application for reappointment. And I sent you a few other notes as well.
Patricia Gamble's the one that retracted?
She did.
Okay.
And beyond that, there's some other notes here about the option to promote an all member, to a full member as well as an existing member of the traffic commission who would be interested in serving this as well. If you have any questions about these ones, please let me know.
Well, I know in your notes, it was discussed that Mike Mills has some interest, and he certainly is abundantly qualified as a candidate for that commission. And then Ryan Spatachini has applied. And Ryan has served on, I think, maybe a traffic commission.
He's currently serving at the administration.
And he's resident of McIntosh, which is obviously an area that needs representation as well. I feel that those two fill the slots, nothing everyone else fills out.
I'd say that too.
I agree. So what would that leave us, would that leave us the alternate?
That means there are two, so that, if you chose to reappoint Lee Run to membership, and he opposed, chose to have Mike Mills and Ryan Spatachini, they would be the three full seats. And then Hillary Hill would stay as an alternate. And then you have two additional broken alternate seats as well as additional broken, as well as ETJ seats, which fortunately don't have any applications.
On the ETJ?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have, now you have two more alternate seats to fill. If you would like this to be the full version.
Is everyone comfortable with reappointing Lee Run? I see no reason not to. So that gives us three handles. And is there an applicant for the alternate with Patricia Gamble stepping out?
Yes, so all of these people are eligible to reappoint as alternates as well.
Okay. So for the point? How everybody feel about that? Is that good? Okay. So the one we really need to work on is the additional vacant seat and the two ETJs, is that right? Or is it one ETJ?
There's, so there's one more alternate seat that you could fill. And then there's also an ETJ seat and an ETJ on one in blue.
Yeah. So what's everybody's thoughts on that? From an application.
Do you have, you have the, Matthew Reed and Jordan Britton are still eligible to be reappointed?
Is there any reason that we shouldn't?
I don't know. And it seems like I saw that. Yep, there you go.
Just Jordan Britton, I thought we reported that individual to another. Were they reporting another board, another board in Britain?
Nothing aware of it. Okay.
Figure out the gentleman, one alternate and one for ETJ?
We have no ETJ appointments. We have no ETJ applicants at this time. So I just included these to show that they were open, but you don't have anyone to fill those seats. So right now, you have an additional, if you choose to, to report a queen to your alternate seat, you have one additional alternate seat.
So we would have Mike Mills as a seat appointment, Ryan Spatachini as a seat appointment, Lee Run as a reappointment. And Courtney as an alternate.
Yes.
So we want one more to take from this list with Matthew Reed and Jordan Britton. Anybody have preference in that?
I remember you named Courtney McQueen as one of those alternate spots.
Okay, so we got Courtney then. And then we have one more.
Was it the Jordan Britton?
Everybody good with Jordan Britton?
Yeah.
Okay. Jordan. So just for clarity, that leaves, that flips us with Mike Mills as a seat appointment, Ryan Spatachini as a seat appointment, Lee Run as a seat appointment, which is reappointed. Courtney McQueen. Courtney McQueen as an alternate, an alternate, and then Jordan Britton as an alternate. And we have two ETJ seats, one alternate and one full seat that's vacant with no applications.
Yes.
So we need to approve for that, that gets that taken care of.
Yeah.
This is, this is the board of commission, not made with attorneys here and how this group, whether these people, how they can work together, or what kind of experience they might have.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you guys?
On B and Z, yeah, yeah. Oh, yes, and then you have his question.
Well, it is important to have a well-rounded group of, these are volunteers, obviously, appointed by you. It always is helpful to have experienced members who have served on the planning and zoning commission for some time, that can help to guide and sort of mentor for others. We like to see a wide range of folks with different backgrounds. Obviously, if you've got experience from real estate or land use, architectural background, anything that's development oriented, it's always benefited. Sometimes we have licensed professionals included on the board as well. So it's important, these folks are looking at a variety of things. They're looking at text amendments to our unified development ordinance, so those are more technical things, and then they're looking at rezoning applications, updates to our comprehensive plan. So it's, it's a lot of material. And so for somebody who has some expertise and background on that, it makes it obviously easier, but we go through a training process with the members as well.
This group needs how often?
Once a month.
Once a month.
The fourth Monday of the month.
Yeah, well, obviously, we're losing some great tenure people off of this commission, so it's gonna take anybody, regardless of aptitude, it takes you a little while to get to speak, so. Yes, yeah. That's my question, with this significant turnover, which quite frankly, this time I remember having as much turnover from that, on B and Z, are you gonna become the parent and teacher both to go through this process?
It is important to have good training and everybody have, looking at things consistently. From a, from a comprehensive perspective, we will be going through, just reminding existing members and new members of what their roles and responsibilities are. There are ongoing training at the school of government, and also we will be working through with, with the existing and new members, what their roles and responsibilities are, just like the rest of the oldest.
Do we require their thank class with the institute?
It's part of their ongoing with the quasi judicial as well. I don't think it's a requirement for them, it certainly cannot hurt, with us being as the certified local government CLG, it is required for training exercises for the historic preservation commission. But I don't believe there's a formal requirement for the other boards.
It's for the P O A and H B C for providing conditions. And yes, training is on the horizon and very near future, both of those organizations.
So the reason I bring this up, this board is gonna have to be some diversity in terms of expertise, because that's what they face it, they need each opportunity, so. May, if we could, again, these people I'm sure most of them are employed to some degree, is there, like you said, you said school of government, but what's, I would, I'm gonna ask if we could at least research what kind of training they might be interested in to help them, this, to be a first meeting for us meeting this group.
Yeah, typically, the first meeting where everybody is reappointed and we get the new members, staff will go through, spend some time and go through what the U D O says regarding their roles and responsibilities, where to find the ordinances, where to find the comprehensive plans, where they can find minutes of prior meetings and, and start a baseline, almost, almost create a handbook for them, in terms of all the materials that they need. We try not to be too overwhelming, because it's a lot, but we only, only meet once a month. In other cases where I work within our jurisdictions, we've had workshop meetings as well, where we don't have, we meet separately to just kind of go over items that people want additional information on. So I definitely see that it, it is going to be needed with the turnover that we have, but we have some experienced existing members too, so hopefully we'll have, everybody will be caught up to speed.
It would also probably be a good idea with the new, those newly appointed, that's never served on it before, if we can send them a link to one of the meetings, that they could just see, this is how it goes, this is what they're dealing with. And that might stimulate some questions or help them to reach out. But I think when you look at those that are on the committee, that are on the commission that have been there for a little bit, leadership will rise to the top and it'll be, it'll be fun. Since we don't pay any, any I O ninety-two, you know, that can, um. Yeah, that's bad. Okay, anything else on that?
Good question. So Hillary, Charles D. Lee, James Kirkpatrick, all the remaining members that are, that will remain going forward, the rest are me?
Ethan Rayner as well.
Excuse me?
Ethan Rayner is also still on.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, Ethan Rayner, right here. Okay.
Which is correct. Okay, you have a question on that? Thank you, Jen. Next item is board of commission reports, we have none this evening, so our final item is item G, city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And just a couple of things, and hopefully we can get these added to our agenda for tomorrow. We received notification today from the state on our $500,000 direct allocation. That was an allocation for the PFAS study with Big Nano, which is now Invicta. We wanna thank our delegation for helping us with that. We've already done the budget amendment for the project, but we have not received the funding until notification today. So there will be a resolution on your agenda that will add to consent, that will accept that funding. And Bob, did you wanna kind of? The pilot is going well, isn't it?
Well, it hasn't really kicked off yet, we've done some preliminary work, but the pilot will involve testing Invicta's treatment system, plus working with NC Pure and the North Carolina Laboratory to look at some other technologies to remove PFAS and the waste water. So those are the, hopefully, where we get kicked off here this fall.
Yeah, and they've got a very many.
They, they have a, a small treatment unit set up, actually the same size as the one that they're piloting in Pittsburgh, in their office over on, on Webb Avenue. I went over and visited, it's pretty interesting, so.
So Bob said it is not the most overwhelming thing in the world, but it works, or it works.
Exactly, we both spoke, Steve.
Walsh.
It's Steve's name, but. The CEO at Invicta, and I both spoke at a conference, and he used the term as we believe will, underwhelm you when you see this, this system, because it's not a flashy bells and whistles type of thing, it's real basic and, so it seems to work, so that's what we're hoping to test it at larger scale and prove what it does.
But we've already had the budget amendment done, so we're just waiting for that. Also to let you know, we have been working catalyst on a proposal to help us with our upcoming bond education, that will really give us that additional expertise as we move forward with the educational process for the 68.5 million geo-bond agreement that will be this November. As you've probably seen in your JIP packet, we do have a budget amendment for $75,000. This contract will lead for $25,000, or it costs, I could see, $25,000. We don't think we'll be using all of that, but again, it will help us with that oversight, but we wanted you to be aware of that, and with your approval as well, we will add that contract to the consent agenda as well, and it has been reviewed by our attorney.
So, given the fact that we can inform and not advocate for, for the bond, all communications will go through a third party that will be sort of the informational conduit, is that what the premise is?
We're really making sure that we are just educating as well, and it really helped us kind of fill in the gaps, since they've done this before, hey, have you thought about this as a informational project, have you thought about this? And really helping give our staff, and John and Morgan have done just an outstanding job, and I do wanna thank them for the job they've done, but really to help them with a deeper bench, because they still have other jobs that they have to do aside from bond as well. So we're, we're really excited, we've got some really good information that we've been working on, we've had our press releases done, we're all running everything through our bond council to make sure that we are doing exactly that, the educational piece and not the advocacy piece, but that's going well so far. We had a very good meeting with staff today, and I sent council a copy of the notes from that this afternoon, but.
Help me with the difference between education and advocacy.
I, I can say, here's what we're planning to do with the funds, but I can't say, please go out and vote, we really want you to support this, we want you to vote yes for the bond. We can't say that.
It's true, it's insane, certainly y'all are free.
Yeah, y'all are.
You're free to vote whatever you want.
I'm talking about, this terrible turnover that I've talked during the last three weeks, and I'm not sure who said about it, Postcards said, it was not saying vote this, but it just said what the bond package was, and what he would buy.
And that's what we're working on right now.
And the city staff can do that.
Yes. Yes, we can do that.
Education.
We, we can go out and.
Did you say yes or no?
To public groups, to educate them what is in the bond, how we're planning to prepare the bond, and what is, is entailed in the projects.
And I'd be interested, talk about public groups, that have changed over the years what they used to be, it's not as, you know, in terms of organizations, if you're in one's way to do it, it is, can we, or is it, can the staff, or is, do we need to go in and try to identify groups of people that we can at least go and discuss what these bonds are about? For example, Edgewood.
Right.
Population.
Right.
That's a pretty big population.
We're, we're doing that now with staff, and, and, but, one of the things that we need council's help as well is if we're missing a group, like, I don't think we discussed the Edgewood group today, so if we're missing groups, we need to know who we're missing and who we need to contact, and how, you know, maybe you can be our opening to get us in the door for those groups.
When we did the bond of the four, the scope system, we went everywhere, from Swepton ville, fire department, to down in the southern part of the county, every one that had some type of organization we had. The northern part, they had several groups too as well.
My point is, for all of us, if we can identify some of these groups that we think we need to get to, and pushing this, there's very few civic organizations left.
That's very true, yeah.
And we talked a lot today about professional associations, like the Realtor Group, the homeowners, or the home builders association, those type groups as well, so places that you can think of that we have not, please let us know, we'll make sure to do that outreach to them.
Have you received much feedback? Has anyone, like, even took the group or organization, called for the city and said, hey, what is this whole bond thing about? I want more information. Have you gotten that type of?
We've not that, we've had a couple of groups, I've made a couple of presentations so far, and we're trying to fill in some of the gaps for them, but not overwhelming as far.
Churches are big, yeah.
You're early in the process.
We're very, yeah.
You're really late in the process.
So you have a grant, but as far as what she's asking, we're not quite there yet.
People aren't really aware yet, I think they are becoming, definitely.
Right, and that, you know, we're, we're putting something in City Works.
Certainly, and it's all the contract that you'll be looking at tomorrow on their consent agenda, is one of their next steps. It will help our staff internally.
And we mentioned churches.
Right, yeah.
In the, like, way long ago, when we were trying to build Neveson Park, we actually had information, just information, cards or whatever given out, that we feel people go out and give to the parents. Is that okay?
Yes.
Which we may talk about.
National, I doubt. We're, we're.
Education is, is, is all good, it's all fair.
You just can't talk.
It's the advocacy that I love.
Yeah, yeah, and my point is, we just need, to be fair, we need to have an opportunity to figure or think about what groups of people, people who still gather, was as different as times gone on.
Well, H O As are a great group.
Right, yeah. I mean, we're in a job for couples.
Yeah, we need to try to identify these groups of people, or get information to them, whether they would order or not, that's up to them.
That was part of what was in this afternoon's staff meeting, and it was also mentioned at the same time that the five of you would be instrumental in giving us additional leads as well as taking, if you could table roll in this if you chose to, and make those contacts and speak yourself.
Well, for example, like, the Mac, there's a specific user group that uses the Mac, so we need to make sure that we reach them, and that they fully are aware of what the bond could be for the future of the Mac.
And we, through, still, the Aquatics Center has those people, do you know, or there's
That's what I was gonna say, that we received so many emails when the Mac went down, if we can circle back, and that's something I had thought of, going back to those same constituents and saying, hey, this is how we're planning through the bonds and to fix it.
Yeah, can any of these information put together, if, let's say, let's say what people use the Mac, if, if we had their mail address, can we mail what you use it?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I think the Mac is the most beloved, I've been on the council now for eight, nine months, and that was like the largest amount of, like, feedback I've received as a county government, was when the Mac went down, so I think that, that's a good population.
And how do you do it?
Well, it's always more important when you take something away that you've already been used to having, than it is when you're envisioning something that you've never experienced, so.
And so, you think, all think about that, what would be effective, or if you say, with the local, with the media changing so much, you know, the opportunity to accept the allocation dues, I mean, how many of you all get the Times News?
Tell me one person.
Two.
Two. I mean, how do we figure, and how do we, you know, try to address, you know, out there? The other question is, can you work through the schools with this?
Yeah, yes.
You can?
Yes, we've contacted A D S S, and they're gonna connect us with their P T Os and P T As and their athletic boosters, but as far as working through the schools to communicate to families, no, but they will connect us to.
To the boosters and.
Correct, yeah.
So we get, we get part of the population to us?
That's right, yeah.
How about your school line?
What?
About your school.
Sure. Not, not just the students, but already like the PPO.
Well, as you, as you're aware, many of the high schools utilize the MAC for these two things.
Well, that, that, we need to go back and figure out who has in the past or make sure we get them this information now if they want to have any, you know, info.
But I, I, again, I do want to thank Morgan and John, just really for the great work that they've done to get us to this point. And what we're kind of looking for catalyst is somebody to give us some of that additional help and help us on the bench as well.
One other thing, if, if we had, in the last one, we had volunteers who was giving out cards for employee or, or not, or Apple, people running the office, also gave out cards for bond back. Is that?
Staff can, city staff can. The volunteers can, yes. Volunteers can, yes, sir.
Talking about the subject matter material was education, it's not.
Education.
That's correct.
What it's about, that has to be rolled, to be like that. But if, if David was feeding us in here, or Thomas was to him, he's, he's in the, nobody wants to, he wants to hand something out, he can hand this out in any of the, any of the areas of.
Any, any public place, anywhere, he would like to.
Absolutely, yeah. Any volunteer can do that.
Any volunteer can do that.
Yes, sir.
So.
We can.
My point is, is I made a little print up and if I was setting out, I was wondering, what, do I take what and go with?
And, and that's part of the reason why we have the budget amendment as well, is to help fund, because areas of cost that's going to be associated with this as well.
And the other part of it is, when is it going to be?
October 17.
September 1?
October 17.
October 17, yeah. Okay, so that's, that's, it's a big due date too.
Yeah, most things are going to need to be done ahead of that, or a day, yeah.
In judicial, but if, no problems or concern, we will add that consent agenda as well.
Okay. Do you want to thank us?
I, I, well, I did want to thank somebody. I, I didn't thank everybody, but I did want to remind everybody that this Friday is our fourth Friday and we're calling it also the Fourth Friday Union. And we will be recognizing our top-ranked North Carolina Law Enforcement Agency of the Year. Again, we'd like to encourage city council to be at the main stage at 7:00 PM on Friday and there'll be a special introduction at that time. Morgan, if I'm missing anything there, wear blue.
And I think everyone should have an invite.
Yeah.
And probably something on a media release on it tomorrow, if there's anything you guys would like to add for that media release or be there for, you know, some kind of blue lines.
Blue, blue lines, wear, wear the color blue and the, we're, it's part of our year of celebration of our PD and chief, did you want to say anything?
I know we'll do a little bit more formal celebration tomorrow, but we're definitely looking forward to the Fourth Friday. Thank you all, everybody who put that together and council, thank you for your continued support.
So, you let him speak in the Fourth Friday, right?
I am wherever he tells me to. Absolutely, especially for a celebration.
All right.
And just grab, that's all I have.
Yeah, I was, I was, I thought we were going to have the fights and forfeits on this agenda, but we didn't.
We are working on that as we speak. There, we're, we're trying to combine that with looking at some of our affordable housing or our raising of housing and, and, so we're, we're, there'll be a larger discussion on that at our next meeting. So, I apologize for that.
Code enforcement.
Yeah.
Mines, code enforcement as well, as well as traffic.
Right.
What's that got to do with affordable housing?
Well, you've got.
Back to middle.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Where we are, you know, the.
Well, David did his presentation, so we're, we're combining that.
Leads on property that we have to raise.
Right.
Remolish.
It's, it's got to be a much larger look when we got into it and we did not want to do it halfway, so that's where we respectfully put it off.
David, what, what implications is the raising of, of house?
As far as code enforcement is concerned, say, how did they?
Divolution.
Divolution.
It's pretty involved, procedure would be processed environment, that's, that's what I'm looking for, what's in pipeline.
Very, very much so.
Yeah, that's my point.
What were you going to say, Bob? I really wanted to hear that, because I'm, I'm not really.
But, you know, really, you know, we've done it for years, you know, much of time by complaint rather than periodic inspection, maybe doing both, but going around town and be finding houses dilapidated, you know, can't live with it any longer. It really, you start into the process with respect, you know, notifying owners and they're typically given an opportunity to fix them up. And once it's not, hopefully, becomes a disbody, there'll be order for demolition. So, that's, that's a list that you're putting together. I'm assuming there are some and it works.
That's a long due process.
Yeah, it's a very long, it's a very long process. But just to make it clear, what I'm more interested in, and I'm fine with all that, but I'm interested in the ones with fines that are given out that we don't collect. What's the difference between the two? Because that's, that's happening and we all know.
So, what you're saying, Bob, is that when inspectors go out, find a nation, and they find the owner of the property.
Right. Or it could be a parking ticket. It doesn't have to be a house, a parking ticket that I get for parking in front of a car, for example, when I'm in South School, but I'm like, I'm paying. Who's, who's going to have for me not, for me to pay it? Because I'm saying it's not getting done.
Well, how does, how's that process work then?
That's what we're going to be.
Right. How it will be combined, we're like that.
We, we started talking about the rules on property and collections and all that, and that's how it kind of got rolled into one major discussion and wanted.
I, I understand all that, but I'm still not, I'm not, I don't want to get away from the original fault of the collection file versus houses.
Yes.
I, I understand this both ends, but.
So, staff clear on that?
Yes, I do. Definitely first.
I'm not going to. You going to expect that in September?
Yes, I would, yeah, we will, definitely.
That's good. September? All right, anybody have any?
We are here.
This is a kind of parameter. Good questions. Done, I mean, important.